Is Mayor's report? Can I tell you?
I just learned that.
Because we're just going back to this.
No, because of the new life.
Oh, and I wish I said that was very nice. But they don't have coffee. Mayor. Hello. Sorry. Sorry. Please come to order. So I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public input. No mayor. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Uh, no amendments, no.
Okay. Mayor's report. Lots of things happening in Linsburg this week. And schools are opening. Bethany College students are returning. Lots of little people will be running across the intersections. And so be extremely careful as you're driving around town for all the little people. Linsburg got some good news this past week in the U.S. Census. Our population now is 3,776 people. That's the most people that have ever lived in Linsburg since it began in 1869. That's amazing. McPherson County is now over 30,000 people. It's the most people that have ever lived in McPherson County as well. So I think the world is finding that things are pretty good here in central Kansas. And little towns like Linsburg have a lot to offer. So that's a great thing. Yes, you can interrupt me.
Jordan has a little more information about the cities that have grown in size. Jordan, you want to give that detail that you just gave me a couple of minutes ago?
Yeah, so just some good news context around the census data. So Linsburg grew 9.2 percent in the last 10 years of cities between 2 and 5,000 people. So similar sized communities. Rate number four in the state. And in all cities, it ranked number 50. So with the top 10 cities also between 2 and 5,000, it's the only community in the center of Kansas that grew. Or it's in that top 10 percent. So anyway, good news.
That's good news. That's right. Thanks. Thanks very much. Yeah, so I was in an ad hoc meeting this morning and relating this information. And I know for someone that has lived in Linsburg for a long time, he used to say, oh, it's a little over 3,000. Oh, it's about 3,200. Well, now remember this, everyone. It's 3,776. And if somebody said, oh, it's almost 4,000. So anyway, but that's good news on many fronts. We have another big deal this week. Gary Shugren is going to be retiring. And we are going to have a reception from 3 to 5 at the Sunstrom this Friday. Everyone is invited to come and celebrate with Gary. I know he knows that there is life after retirement. And Gary has been with the city as a community development director since 2008. A long time. And before that, he was on city council for six years. So what is that, about 19 years or so? That you've been involved in the city. So thank you very much. We know that you're still going to be around because we have a phone member. Thanks so much. Thank you. All right. Roxy. Okay, here we go. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Move to seconded, Roxy.
We have to keep your.
What? Evil. Rebecca. Yes. Mars.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda is approved. Are there any appointments?
No appointments here.
Planning and zoning?
Nothing to report.
All right. Old business. Executive search firm contract. All right. You council, you all got a lot of papers, pages. Was it Mark?
163.
219.
Okay. Whatever. This process, what we have done is we sent requests for proposals to eight different firms. We received back five proposals. We chose three out of those five. And have had other contact with them with some additional questions, emails. Feel free to jump right in. Rick has been the president of the council and me as serving as mayor have guided this process up to this point. The three companies that we chose, I think, all gave good presentations about how they would help us in finding a new city administrator. And from those three, Rick and I are suggesting that we select the Austin Peters group out of Kansas City. One group was out of Texas. One group was out of Illinois. The... And feel free to.
Well, yeah, I think all three gave a lot of good information and had similar good points for us to look at. I think what it boiled down to is we just felt that Austin Peters, maybe we had a little bit more of a working relationship with over the last several years through different contacts and different meetings. And maybe would have a better, a little bit better working knowledge of Linsburg.
So we've used them before?
Pardon me?
We've used them before?
Um, not for this, but.
They've done some presentations for us. Retreats and that kind of thing. So that's how we've interacted with them.
I was just gonna say, looking at their planning group, it seemed the cities that they'd worked with were more similar to us than the other two groups cities worked with. And that was a big positive in my eyes.
Okay.
The price was better, too.
The price was better. The price was much better.
Well, and actually, you know, when we started this process, we both talked to each other and said, we're not going to look at the price to begin with. Let's just look at the product and see how that's going to fit in with Linsburg. And then, you know, I mean, price always has something to do with it, but that wasn't a determining factor. I just thought it'd be interesting to look at. I was like, yeah, that seems kind of like the better bang for the buck.
Well, I think it depends on what caliber of recruitment you want. I mean, that's different, too. So I mean, there are different... When you look at the cities that they had worked with between the three, I mean, I would say the one out of Kansas City, and I understand it's Kansas City. The other two are more national companies. But it's definitely, I mean, like, Abilene was there mainly. So whereas the other ones had done Lawrence and some other communities are definitely larger than we are, but have, I would say, a somewhat more similar vibe than Hutch or Abilene.
So anybody, any council, any?
Do we need to make a motion then, or to?
We'd need a motion. And you should have, in the packet of information that you got, you should have had a copy of the contract that they have presented. We have to fill in the blanks. But that would be the contract that we would be... Okay. And it's 13,000 plus travel.
I did talk to someone who's been in city administration for 30 years about the information they had with the firms. And the other thing they had, and Becky and I had this conversation before the meeting today, the other two firms have much more of a national presence. At least this person's, this was this person's perception of being involved in the national lives. So I think a change is our recruitment. So, you know, if we're looking for someone in Kansas, I think, you know, we would definitely look at that one in Kansas City. But for wanting more of a national search, I think the other two, from what I read and the information I gathered, have a little bit of a background or background in that. But it's been something we're looking for.
There you go. Any other comments? Does anybody want to make a motion?
I will. So I'll make a motion to accept a proposal in the amount of $13,000 from the Austin, was it Austin?
Peters.
Peters group with additional fees not to exceed $200 a day for hotel and mileage and meal charges.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Is there any other discussion?
Well, the only other discussion I would add would be similar to some that's been made. That I felt like with a lot of the examples that they provided were towns similar to ours in our area. And I think that's good. And if those entities are happy with the quality that they received in those positions that were filled, that was kind of the take I took on it.
Anybody else? Roxy. Ed.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Kirsten.
No.
Rick.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Evil.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We will, we, this council, will be serving as a a search group as well. And we'll get back to you on that when that's going to be. We will let the Austin Peters group know that we did select them this evening. And then we'll get a calendar together about when these things are going to happen. So stay tuned. Did you have anything more?
No. Again, I think the Austin Peters group, they'll assist us along the way, too. I mean, this is the first time that any of us have done this in quite some time, naturally. So as far as getting a calendar together on how we're going to proceed and what we'll be looking at, we'll be working closely with them to get all that done as well.
All right. New business. Kansas City Metro billboard contract extension.
Riding cowboy.
Yeah, I don't think I'll be doing that for a while. I had a horse accident Friday. So this is a copy or a little miniature of the billboard. One of the billboards we have in Kansas City. Outfront Media brought this to me about a week and a half ago just as a thank you kind of, so we could see this is an example of what we're doing. And if you want to pass it around, just make sure you look at it lonely. I guess, anyway. We have been running billboards in Kansas City metro area now since May. This boards have impressions of anywhere from about half a million impressions a week to over a million, about 1.3 million a week. It depends on how many people are partnering at the time for the billboards, just because there's 24 hours in a day. And so if we have more people that are partnering for that billboard, we would have less impressions during that time. We, initially, the CBD works with numerous businesses in Linsburg to put together money. And they were able to give varying amounts, whatever they felt like they could put towards the project. And it was decided, total consensus, that we should let this be a visit Linsburg message and not an individual business message. So we have, I think, seven different billboards running right now. This is just one of them. But they all have, most of them have Jim Richardson images, which he gave us permission to utilize. And just have a basic visit Linsburg message. The only one for Linsburg that's different is one that has sansane artwork on it. And they did a different billboard for the sansane that looks a little bit different, that tells more of the story of the sansane roof loop. So we also partner Great Bend CBB. And McPherson CBB each put $1,000 apiece towards this project. And they each have one billboard that's in the mix with Linsburg billboards being shown a higher percentage of the time because we had a higher investment in it. That was our agreement when we went into this, that they were willing to do it. At $2,100 a month, it was something we didn't know how long we could do. But I went ahead and I applied for a grant with the McPherson Community Foundation, McPherson County Community Foundation, and was granted an additional $6,300, which will get us now through the end of the year. And I haven't heard back yet from the State Department of Tourism, but I have applied about a week and a half ago for another grant from them. That would be a 40% reimbursement grant from our initial investment. And this grant, that would get us into next year. And again, every single business has said that they would like to just take that reimbursement money and not be reimbursed, but run more billboards with it. So billboards are seen in multiple areas. We have six different billboards that were featured on. And people that are going, say, to the River Market or to the Plaza, just more popular areas in Kansas City, would see those. Businesses downtown, I have no way to gauge, you know, how many people see them. But we do know what traffic looks like in those areas. And it's good. And Kansas City has been well traveled this summer. And we have businesses that are saying that they're seeing more people, they think, from the Kansas City metro area and people that are traveling and coming through are possibly seeing us as well. And individuals that live in Kansas City that know about Linsburg. That will say, hey, that's Linsburg doing a billboard. We're seeing Kansas City. So anyway, so I think they've been well seen. And I think if we continue, if we just continue to get our message out. And we're getting ready with these grant dollars, if they're approved by city council, to change up our images so that there'll be more fall and winter images now instead of summertime things. So we'll feature some more things like Lucia and some things that are more just Linsburg in the wintertime. So anyway, we'll be able to do those as frequently as we want to do. Anyway, so I'm asking for the $6,300 that was granted by the McPherson County Community Foundation to be approved to use for further digital billboard signage purchased from Outfront.
So moved.
Second.
Move to seconded, any discussion? It looks great, Polly. Mark.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Evil.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Kirsten.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Ed.
Please, motion carries. Thank you, Polly. Next item is the COVID vaccine.
As you're aware, the city of Linsburg has received American... ARPA. I was going to say NACMA, but I forgot. American Rec... ARPA. I'm sorry. I apologize. Is receiving funding through the ARPA program. One of the eligible expenditures is incentives for vaccinations. The Strategic Alliance Group was meeting, it's been two weeks ago now, talking about what can we do to address the issue of the level of positives, particularly with the Delta variant. And talked about a public service campaign encouraging vaccinations. And ended up with the idea of doing incentives for vaccinations of $50 per person, or not per person, per shot. So if you're getting the Moderna or Pfizer, you're getting $50. And you get the other $50 when you get the second shot. Johnson &amp; Johnson is just $50. And it is an allowed expense under the ARPA program. We, when I say we, I'm talking staff, went ahead and got this rolling because of the emergent issue, public health issue, that it was partnering with Linsburg Family Health Clinic and Auburn Pharmacy to do this. In the interim, the Nut Fund through the McPherson County Community Foundation is affronting the money with the idea that they would be reimbursed on the back end for the incentives that were paid. So what we're asking for is a motion to approve a vaccination incentive not to exceed $50,000. And this program would run through Labor Day, September 6.
Can we hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Is it working so far that they've gotten Evil to do it?
Well, last week was the first week. It started a week ago on the ninth. Week one, there were 48 vaccinations. When I say that, and this is, the people that are eligible are people that live in Linsburg, students, staff, and families of Smokey Rock School District, students, staff, faculty of Bethany College. And so for Auburn, they did 19 at the pharmacy last week. They partnered with the library to have a vaccination clinic during the street dance. Vaccinated another 19 at the street dance. The clinic last week did 10. For this coming week, Auburn has 20 scheduled for this coming week. And 17 of those are people that definitely qualify under the incentive program. So right now, based upon those numbers, we're looking at 65 through two-week time period.
What was the numbers before the program started? As a comparison.
In terms of the number of people, I can't tell you what was, how many were vaccinated in Linsburg because they don't track it to that level. In McPherson County, it was about a 42% vaccination rate. That's as low as it's drilled down in terms of data collection.
I just, so how many were, got the shots in the week after? But how many people got the shots the week prior? We don't know that.
I don't know that. I didn't ask, even ask for that.
So we don't have any idea of the provided benefits or not?
We just know that the demographic of who receives shots is what Grant just lined, outlined. But we don't know, like, the week before at Auburn, they have lines that come from all over the place, so.
I think we have to get people vaccinated. So I applaud the idea of coming up with this to incentivize people to get it. If this is what pushes them over to get it, then great. Because we're not going to be able to return to life normal. So we will get vaccinated, so.
I guess, Mike, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I guess I just have a couple of concerns. One is that it's gimmicky. And it makes me wonder if people will hold out for instance for the booster shot? Will all just wait? Because they're going to pay me eventually? That's one concern. The other concern is, are we liable, Bill? If there's an adverse reaction?
You're getting way, way ahead of things. But I don't see how the city would be liable just because they're reimbursing things. But, you know, that's, the imagination of plenty of lawyers is unbalanced.
So the ARPA funds that referred to here is the same funding that we were discussing earlier?
It's them.
Yes, there are.
These are.
Yeah, it's $5 million that the county has. Was that, is that accurate?
Well, yeah. Well, we're not getting this funding from the county. This is, we get an allocation to. We're getting $499,000 of ARPA funds also. And 249.5 this year and the other half next year. And under category one, public health COVID-19 vaccinations are one of the things that can take forward this program.
Is anybody keeping track of who? Because, I mean, if I was a student, I'd hop over to the library and then I'd hop over to Auburn and have a nice bench in my pocket. I don't think people are going to get multiple vaccines.
When you get issued a vaccination card, does that mean somebody's not putting it away and going and getting a vaccination somewhere else? There's not that level of control.
There was any record of it.
Yeah, that would excuse me $50. It's an easy $50. Well. This week in four days, get off from 400.
Oh, wow.
No, I don't want to pull that.
I want one, too.
Go to the icebergs.
I think that tells you how desperate we need people to get vaccinated.
And they've been available since March. That's what I agree.
And free.
And it's free. And I don't, I don't understand if the vaccine is available, why they haven't got it already.
I don't think $50 is going to make a huge difference. It might get a few more percent. But it ain't going to solve the problem. But it's not a bad thing either. Three more percent of whatever is better than zero.
And this money is not, I mean, this is used or isn't, right? This isn't, it's not the city's taxpayer money.
No. Well, it's not a direct assessment from the city. Correct answer, that way. Yeah, it is money flowing from the federal government to the city.
And there's only certain ways we can use it.
Right. The other defined purposes that it can be used.
Any other comments? Evil.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Kirsten.
Yes.
Blake.
No.
Jody.
No.
Ed.
No.
Motion carries. Move to seconded, Chris.
Good evening. For you, you have a couple of quotes for stock material for the fire department. This is just material used to install water services. So it's just normal items that we use. But we've got a little bigger order this time because of services going in and out of Stockholm. So I'm just asking for a motion to approve the quote from Korn May for the purchase of inventory materials for $3,649.86. So moved.
Second. Move to seconded, any discussion? Roxy.
Ed.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Kirsten. Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Evil.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Something's staying.
Good evening. So new air packs were budgeted for the fire department in our capital improvement plan for 2021 and 2022 to replace the current AP50-style packs that our fire department currently uses. An air pack, otherwise known as SCBA, which is a self-contained breathing apparatus. It's an open-circuit apparatus designed to provide air to our firefighters for combating fires is an open-circuit apparatus designed to provide air to our firefighters for combating fires or other hazardous atmospheres. We have twelve air packs currently from the city fire department. Eleven of them were built in 2001. The other one was 2002, so they're roughly about twenty years old. The air packs are annually inspected and repaired as needed, but because of their age, replacement parts are becoming difficult to come by, making it more difficult to certify them. Our air bottles also have a fifteen-year lifespan. The current twenty-two bottles, correct you, twenty-two bottles, eight are expired. So we have fourteen that are remaining, and they will begin expiring intermittently between now and 2024. Fire Chief Clark obtained quotes from three different companies, Ed, M. Felt Municipal Emergency Services, and Weiss Fire and Safety. And that's for the twelve air packs, twenty-four oxygen bottles, and twenty-four face pieces. So we're asking, or question to accept the Felt equipment quote in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-four cents for the following reasons. I'm more happy to get into more detail, but basically involves interoperability, training, longer lifespan, and more air capacity, as well as annual maintenance requirements. Now, we budgeted fifty thousand dollars for 2021 to purchase the first half. However, when we got the recent quotes, Scott pricing is scheduled increase in September, which will alter the remaining balance of the quote that was originally provided to us and what we budgeted for last year. So we've obtained leasing financing proposals to fund the remaining balance, up to fifty thousand dollars, to ensure that we obtain the best possible pricing for the equipment. So what are, we're asking us to approve the purchase of twelve Scott air packs, twenty-four air bottles, and twenty-four face masks in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from Ed and Felt Equipment to be paid off this year by the city. And with the next item, if that goes through a one-year lease-to-buy agreement with the Bank of Tesco to cover the remaining balance of the fifty thousand, up to fifty thousand dollars. And then I have Chief Clark here to show the equipment, if you're interested, or to speak more specifically to some of the technical aspects of the devices.
So this motion, you were asking for fifty thousand?
Correct.
Do I hear a motion to approve that?
So moved. Before you do a second, actually, if you wanted to go with twelve and twenty-four, you need to prove a hundred thousand. That also binds you, doesn't necessarily bind you on the next option, but makes it more of a foregone conclusion. But you have to encumber the full amount.
Yes.
Now, you could encumber the full amount and then not approve the next item, which is lease purchase agreement. That means the other fifty thousand is going to be taken out of other budgets somewhere. But since you're going to be spending a hundred thousand, you have to encumber a hundred thousand.
Okay.
Correct, Bill? Yeah, I accept you're not actually spending a hundred thousand. It's ninety-one, ninety-one, eight.
Ninety-eight. No, it's actually ninety-eight.
Eight fifty-eight.
Oh, you have it spelled, okay. Yeah, for whatever the.
Ninety-eight, eight fifty-eight, forty-four.
Does that include the interest and everything, and origination fees on the other fifty?
No, no.
So it needs to include that, doesn't it?
That's in the second.
That works.
Financing on it.
Oh, okay, okay. My thought was just to make a motion not to exceed one hundred thousand. Would that be acceptable?
Yes, you could do that, yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of twelve Scott air packs, twenty-four air bottles, and twenty-four face masks, not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars from Ed and Felt Equipment Co.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments, questions?
Well, you had him bring all the stuff. He's got, he's got, he's show us, come on.
I have one question. Well, I, I mean, I assume that the difference in the quote exceeds the amount of cost of financing, but I didn't actually see that in there.
The difference in which quote?
Well, the, if we, if we don't get all of them now, you know.
Well, that's the thing, if, from what Scott has told us, in September, the price will go up eight and a half percent.
That's the part I was looking.
It'll go up eight and a half percent, plus buying it one time gives us a better discount on the equipment than if we split it.
Thanks. I think that eight and a half percent is the piece I was missing.
I will say, I'm one of the ones that called in the fire at the long ramp, and watching the PD officer try and go in there and make sure nobody was in there and quickly come back out because of the smoke. Then seeing fire department go in with those and what they could do with them, this is kind of a no-brainer to me after what you seen that.
Just to give you an idea, at that fire, we used twenty-two bottles of air. Eight of them had to be refilled during the middle of that, so luckily it was across the street. So one of our fire guys was shoveling bottles back and forth while the guys could go back.
And I did witness that as well. How handy is that?
You have a fire across the street, and the fire chief is probably at that place.
Yeah.
So you can see, these seem to be getting.
These are, this is, this actually is a twenty-one or oh-one bottle. I mean, and this, actually, this one didn't even meet, was called NFPA, which was the rules that fire forms go by. This is a dong. It's supposed to be electronic whistle. And this one, when it gets low on air, it goes tick. You can barely hear it anymore, with all the dirt and stuff that's gotten up in there, so.
And just so you know, NFPA stands for the National Fire Protection Association, which is one of the guidelines certifying authorities with their fire equipment.
Carter, we have the equipment?
Considering, no. It's about twenty pounds.
But newer stuff probably weighs about the same.
Yeah, actually, the older ones, they, this one has a metal brain. And then the new ones, they come up some kind of plastic, magic plastic that can take the heat. And they're lighter. They can hold to your back a lot better. They sit down lower. What's nice is because, like this one, I might have it on. I'm a little short. Well, I'm not real short, but with your helmet.
Yeah.
I can't look up because the helmet hits the back of the bottle. Or if you're crawling, trying to look up, you go like this and look around. New ones, they're, they sit down lower, they're more on your hips, they're a lot more comfortable, can wear them a lot better.
So it's not just necessary, it's also beneficial.
Oh, yeah.
And with the new bottles, they're coming with a thirty-year lifespan, which doubles the length. Plus, we get fifty percent more oxygen in this water. It goes from a thirty-minute to a forty-five-minute.
And the new packs have, the warranty says, as long as you own it. And so, and that's the nozzle, like this one, it was filled after the fire. It's sitting there, this valve is starting to go bad. It's already drained half of the air out of it, just because the valve's gone bad. And those are about a hundred dollars a piece, so that'd be, they just fall fell and they come and put new one in.
And they do annual inspections every year?
Have some idea, please.
Well, if folks authorize it, we'll start the process.
If we authorize it, I mean, it's.
Six, eight weeks.
Six, eight weeks, okay.
Are there local people with this company? Because this is in Iowa.
Actually, they're, it's, the guy that does all the work in this place is out of Kansas City.
Okay.
Any other questions? And thank you for bringing show and tell. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, Ross?
Flain?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jody?
Yep.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, related?
Yes. Yep, good afternoon. How about, good evening? All right, so with the approval of the SCBAs, again, we only had fifty thousand budgeted for the 2021 budget. So the other fifty thousand will be paid in 2022. And so with the need to pay for all of it in 2021 to be able to hit that discount for financing, options were explored. So an RFP was sent out to the local banks, the four local banks that have here in town for a fifty thousand dollar lease-to-purchase over eighteen months, with payments every six months with the intent to pay off by the end of 2022. So we did receive actually four quotes from all four banks, a quote from each bank, and you'll see there that they are as follows. The winning bid that we're looking at, the motion to accept, will be the quote from First Bank Kansas at one point seven five with no origination fee for a lease purchase to pay for the remaining balance of the SBAs, SCBAs.
So that is a motion to approve First Bank?
Correct.
Do I hear a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions?
Mine says Bank of Tasked.
Yeah, mine decided. So I thought, I don't have the First Bank in there.
I don't have the First Bank.
We have the other third.
I thought I saw that, dude.
Must have got, I don't think it had a bank.
So that's great news that it's more.
Didn't get updated. It is First Bank Kansas, one of the four. No origination fee.
Even better.
Even better.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? We have Ross? Ed?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Flain?
I'm staying.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes. Thank you.
carries. Thank you very much. Next item is. Andrew, this year?
No, that's Ross.
That's Rossi. Hello. Order five-three-one-five would have been the city de-schedule related to diversions. Currently, the municipal court charges thirty dollars for traffic diversion applications, and there is no charge for criminal diversions. And so they would like to add the thirty-dollar application fee for the criminal diversions. And they would also like to move the diversion fee up to making it paid upfront seven hundred and fifty dollars instead of the twenty-five dollars over the six months of the diversion. And the last change they would like to do is add the diversion fee of two hundred and fifty dollars for driving under the influence charges. The increase is because of the seriousness of the crime, as well as the increased administrative time for both the court clerk and the city prosecutor. So we're looking for a motion to approve orders five-three-one-five and then the city de-schedule regarding diversion fees for the municipal court.
Check.
Any discussions?
These fees all go directly to the city, or do they go to, how are they dispersed as far as are receiving them?
They come into the city, and then at the end of the month, we do a report. Some of them go to the state, and then the rest will go to the city, depending upon judicial branch fees, law enforcement branch fees. There's a full list of things that part of it gets paid out to the state, and the rest goes to the state. Any other questions? Mark?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Flain?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
This ordinance has passed. Next item? Correct, did you say we can do the next three together, this one, or do we have to do all three?
No, that was just to speed up staff.
Okay.
But you can do there, we can't do here.
Okay, good try, good try.
Read.
But, okay, so the Raymer Society for the Arts has submitted a notification of nonprofit organization event promoting the arts, the applications from the APC. But it would allow them to serve complimentary alcoholic liquor and cereal malt beverages at upcoming Maker Street events. And as a nonprofit, Raymer Society is able to sponsor these without a liquor license during the event as long as it's approved by the local governing body by resolution or ordinance, and then it has to be submitted to the state ten days prior to the event. And so they're looking at having this at the Maker Street event on September tenth and November twelfth. So we're looking for a motion to approve the Raymer Society for the Arts Maker Street Art Walk notification of nonprofit organization event promoting the arts form in pass resolution number thirteen dash thirty-one, authorizing the serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverages at the Maker Street Art Walks. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Anybody confused?
I assume these don't have to have all the crazy plans, like the beer garden and everything. Because I mean, those things are like, oh, you have to have these checkpoints.
That's right.
You have to have the police verify, check backgrounds. We don't have to worry about that with these.
The state only requires that they fill out the form and submit it ten days in advance of the event.
Okay.
Okay. Piece of cake.
It is, it is worthwhile to note that even though it refers to the Maker Street, this does not allow any consumption on other driveway. It's still within businesses.
Ah, okay.
There you go.
That's the difference.
Exactly. And those businesses were listed in the application.
Yes.
Okay. Eamonn?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Flain?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Okay, the next one. Okay, again, the Raymer Society, they filled out the same application. This time it is for the Raytral Artist in Residence Reception. And so we are again looking for a motion to approve the Raymer Society for the Arts notification of nonprofit organization event promoting the arts form in pass resolution fourteen dash twenty-two-one, authorizing the serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverage at the Raytral Artist in Residence Reception. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Don't understand it yet? Give it one more time. As long as it's a nonprofit promoting the arts, they're allowed to do it by the state, so. Okay, Ed?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Flain?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Resolution has passed. The third event is, again, Raymer Society on November sixth. They would like to have a wine and charcuterie event as a fundraiser. And so again, I'm looking for the same motion to approve for resolution number fifteen dash twenty-two-one, authorizing the serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverages at the wine and charcuterie. So moved. I'll go three for three.
Same, same.
Moved and seconded.
I have a question. How many can one organization have in a year's time? I can't answer that off the top of my head. Not four, four applications. It's four in a year's time, yes. I was trying to make a difference. Trying to set me up, man.
I didn't know you had to study up before you got here.
So then, like, as part of the question, would be if they're having Maker Street, if there's multiple dates, is it considered?
This counts one. That's one application. You can make four applications.
You're trying to help.
Will they be serving or?
That's right.
And I didn't know that. They didn't want to do that to be served.
Nonprofit knows that, because they're almost out.
Maybe three quarters of their.
Somebody better call them.
This takes them for years to be eager, so we're.
Yep.
Mark?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jody?
Yep.
Flain?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
This related subject is being actively discussed in the legislature. So if you have a feeling, one way or the other about this, contact your legislator and let him know what you feel about it. Okay.
Executive session. Mayor, I move to go into executive session to discuss the acquisition of real estate in connection pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B six for fifteen minutes, and to include the city administrator, city attorney, open meeting or return at seven thirty-one. Second.
Do I get, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
so looking for better, more competitive pricing. Easier to work, I mean, you're not, as long as it doesn't snow, you know, where you have a free thaw, better working conditions. So that's kind of the schedule we're looking at. But in terms of actually having the full contract documents done, bid letting, and award, that schedule hasn't been finalized yet.
Good enough. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, just, I'm just working to... Let's do it. Yeah. No action was... Is that what it said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, are there any other others?
A neighbor asked me about the creek behind our house and maintenance. It's going to be done on that. Is there, how, what's the schedule look like on that? Or has there been any changes on it?
Hasn't been any changes. We're, uh, need to get the letters out about acquired security easements. And then move the process forward. That, that's the next step. Timing wise, in terms of maintenance, ideally, I hope to do it this winter for, for several reasons. One, contractors typically looking for work in the wintertime, so looking for better, more competitive pricing. Easier to work, I mean, you're not, as long as it doesn't snow, you know, where you have a free thaw, better working conditions. So that's kind of the schedule we're looking at. But in terms of actually having the full contract documents done, bid letting, and award, that schedule hasn't been finalized yet.
Good enough. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a project that has been being worked on for approximately twenty?
Long time.
Some years. I don't know if it is. Any other others?
Just a reminder that no study session on September seventh, but we will have a revenue neutral rate hearing at six P M A.
And look at your emails on a regular basis as far as bringing us all together and working with the new Austin Peters group. We are on a timeline on that, so, okay. Do I hear a motion to...
Before you do that, I would ask?
Yes.
That in those email communications, you do not respond to each other, read only. And any discussion would need to be in a formal meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you for that reminder.
Motion carries, Chair.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.